Oh my God. Peters is in the house. How are you? Good? How are you? Good? Listen, I got a job for you.
If something you can handle.
I got a job for you. Come check with me. See me after.
I don't like the stuff that's fun. It can be hard.
Have you heard anything of Meredith lately?
Congratulations on making the commission.
Howdy, partner.
How are you?
John Peters.
You're?
John Peters. Everybody else.
That's right.
He's about our members. How you doing? Good to see you.
Better find the path of least resistance, right?
You're welcome.
Introduce yourself to Commissioner Grant. Hey.
Hey. Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
And I didn't see you come in.
Public hearing at stage.
I'm familiar with you.
We're going to start with a prayer, then we're going to go into the pledge allegiance. I have a father, we're going to thank you for allowing us to come together one more time. Father, we ask you for a special blessing to give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding so that we may be doing the people's business appropriately and accordingly. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of this meeting and its agenda were provided to all news media and persons requesting notification. Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Grant.
Here.
Commissioner Ivory.
Here.
Commissioner Latson.
Present.
Commissioner Platt.
Here.
All right, we'll move to number three. The proposed amendments to section 4.8 of the leak adjustment and appendix C, CWS treatment plant component impact fee of the wastewater collection system use and rate resolution number 24-06. And I believe Ashley's going to get started, and then we're going to open the floor.
Yeah, just some brief overview of this. Again, so appendix C, we are passing on Charleston Water Systems impact fees. So that's what appendix C, the changes there are. The other amendments are amendments to our leak adjustment policy. Whereas now, we will only adjust the leak for one month. This will allow us to adjust leaks up to three months. And I would ask if you, if somebody decides to make a motion to adopt, if you would add the word consecutive on page 20. Or you could just make the motion with, you know, with district manager's recommended amendment. I spoke with them earlier about this. And it really is just a sort of a scribbler's thing. But just to really clarify, the adjustments to three bills should be three consecutive bills, just so it's crystal clear. Thank you.
And we will open the floor for public comment.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this subject?
Nope.
All right, well, we will adjourn this meeting and go directly into the. No, it's in the, it's on the regular.
Please.
So we are going to now call to order the regular meeting of the James Island Public Service District. We've already had opening exercises.
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Grant.
Here.
Commissioner Ivory.
Here.
Commissioner Latson.
Present.
Commissioner Platt.
Here.
First off, we have the committee assignments. I have a sheet. I have the next and adjustments because we are, we rolled the bylaws for a couple of things. There's a two-year limit on being chair. So if anybody has any questions.
Well, thanks for, thanks for putting me on one committee. I've been on everyone, so you haven't hurt my feelings.
Everyone's on two. Now, we have oral and written petitions for regular commission.
Do we have any one of the auditors that would like to speak? Go on. No comments.
All right, we have consent agenda for the minutes. A, regular commission, December 16th, 2024. B, solid waste committee, December 16th. Wastewire committee, December 16th, 2024. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas collectively unless anybody has any particular. She's, I know seconded it. Any discussion?
All right, let's vote.
Commissioner Brown Crouch. Ms. Brown Crouch, she's calling the roll. Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
We're doing the vote, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
To approve the minutes. She made a motion to approve all three minutes.
And I second that.
Yep, and now we're going to vote on it.
Vote.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivory.
Yes.
Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Our auditor has not arrived just yet. I'd like to make a motion to move that item number six down to below number nine, perhaps.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivory.
Yes.
Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll move to staff recommendations. Number seven is adoption of amendments to section 4.8, leak adjustment and appendix C, CWS treatment plan.
And I can make a motion to adopt the change with a maximum adjustment of three consecutive bills.
Second.
Any discussion? I like you just did this.
Moving on.
No discussion, and let's vote.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivory.
Yes.
Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Number eight is edits to the procurement resolution.
Yeah, so on the, in the procurement resolution, these are minor edits to give some more responsibility to the district manager over the procurement functions. And really, this kind of came about, you know, when I first started and speaking with our finance director, Ed, who, by the way, is ill tonight, but I do have him on speakerphone. Really just sort of sharing some more responsibilities, what can I take off your plate, sort of thing. And so it was really just sort of changing that vertige as well as giving more flexibility to the selection committees. So not when we do request for proposals or invitations for bids, but when we do like a request for qualifications and we have to evaluate those proposals, well, RFPs or RQs, based on the evaluation criteria, given more flexibility on who's on that evaluation committee. It could be, you know, other members of staff. For example, we just, we did one with the website redesign, and it was important to have, you know, folks weigh in that are going to be using the website all the time. So things like that. And then also, we fleshed out the section on the cooperative purchasing ability. So we already had in there that we were able to do cooperative purchasing. Everything we, we post is, is online through Skebo on the South Carolina Business Opportunities, so it's statewide. But within, within that, we also have the opportunity to look for state contracting pricing. So if it's already been procured from the state, it's already gone through that competitive pricing process, just kind of wanted to flesh that section out a bit more. And I did run these edits by Tim and Chip, and they gave me their blessing.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the edits to the procurement resolution.
I'll second it.
I have one I would like to discuss. I'm looking at page 16 where it was the director of finance and the department head, and now it's the selection committee. Is this something that's going to be, the selection committee is going to be appointed by the district manager or the chair?
It would still be by the district manager.
District manager, okay. Who's going to be on the select?
You know, likely it would be, you know, if Ed's unable to participate as the finance director, he'd appoint Joanne. Joanne is going to be taking on a lot more procurement responsibilities as well. Just really sort of kind of helping to divvy up some of those tasks.
And the selection committee, I'll consist of, I'm sorry?
At least three people. And then I would select them based on what it is.
Depending on whichever.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it could be the department head that that's related to, or it could be someone else on staff, or even a commission member that has expertise in that field.
Thank you.
Anything good? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivory.
Yes.
Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Number nine, excuse me, updated MOU with CWS regarding Clark's Point Sewer Project.
So this MOU was entered at the very beginning of this project when we, you know, had also included the Up on the Hill and Oaks Point, or Oak Point, sorry. Did I say that right?
Up on the Hill and Oak Point.
So there was some, really, there was some old verbiage in that agreement. They, because we narrowed, the scope changed, the actual number of parcels that Charleston Water Systems sort of was kind of responsible for reduced. And so they, they did come to us wanting to reduce their share of the cost. So I, you know, y'all hired me to be the bad guy, so I pushed back on it and said, look, we've, projects already started, and, and they, they understood and they worked with us, and they were happy to amend this agreement, keeping their cost, cost contribution the same at 85,000, even though their share of the project went down. So appreciate that. And so this edits are, is, is based on that. They were going to approve it on their end last Wednesday at their meeting, but it snowed, so they will now be approving it after we look at it.
I make a motion to update the MOU with CWS regarding Clark's Point Sewer Project.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Good job on keeping the money.
Oh yeah, that was good.
Every little bit counts.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivory.
Yes.
Commissioner Latson.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. And we go back to number six.
There you go.
It'll be the presentation of JIPSCE fiscal year 24 audited financial statements. Hello, everyone.
Hey.
The snow, you got snow, Dan?
You know, my wife is a little disappointed. We live a little bit south of Greenville, and we're usually too far down for snow, and then this time, we were too far up for snow. How are y'all doing?
Hey, how are you doing?
That's right, giving you financials and then a summary that I'll go over.
I was doing that, just to let y'all know, he was not late. I did not tell him that sometimes we start immediately after a public hearing at 6:30.
Right, thank you.
So you're making an excuse for him? Is that what you're doing, Ashley?
What now?
You making an excuse for him?
I'm glad he knew it was my fault.
That's valid.
And I'm sure you were really excited for the audit presentation as well. I apologize. And we usually present in December, Ashley, but that was my fault. For some reason, I thought you wanted me to present in January, and through our discussion this morning, that I realized, no, you'd really rather me present in December. So I told Ashley when we, in every May for all of our June year ends, we call out, we call the clients and ask them when they would like for us to present. So that was my mistake. So I'll make sure that I'm down here December, maybe even September, depending on.
Too many mistakes.
So what I gave you is, you obviously have your audit report, which is nice and thick. And then I like to give a summary, and I like to, I'll go over the audit, but just what this is. I love trend lines. I like for you to see several of you I've seen on the board for a few years and just kind of some decisions you've made, how that's impacted the district over the last five years. And this goes back to basically right there in COVID, so you can kind of see how, how the, the district has done. As far as the audit goes, we didn't have any, we didn't have any issues or any findings. Ed has done a good job. We, as you know, we come in and we're, we're auditing these numbers. These are your numbers. We're auditing them to make sure they're, they're correct, so that when we present this audit report to you, you know that we've audited through these numbers. And we didn't have any issues with the backup or support. Ed had everything ready for us. We had just a, a few journal entries, but nothing significant. Most of our audits, there might be a little cutoff journal entry or some other depreciation, but nothing that would cause any concern. And I always like to point that out because you're making decisions throughout the year based on financials that you'll receive. And if I come in as an auditor and I make just a lot of journal entries that completely change the financials, then that should give you concern because now you're, you've been making decisions on financials. So point that out because that's not the case here. So I would, I would say that your financials you're getting at your meetings, you can rely on, because we didn't have many changes at all to those. And we didn't have anything that, you know, this is a financial statement audit during that process. If anything like fraud pops up, we, we're to investigate. We didn't have anything that, that looked fraudulent or anything like that. So, so we feel pretty, pretty good about, about your numbers. And really, as you'll see, on your trend lines are really, really good. Your financial position, your financial liquidity has improved over the years. And I'll, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions, otherwise I'll just kind of keep.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, what I'm hearing you saying that our financial statements have gotten better over the years.
It has, absolutely.
And so I think you need to reiterate on that because that's a, a big thing.
Well, and that's what I'll do here is I'll look into these numbers. You'll, you'll see it. I mean, it pops, it pops off the page for you. So the reminder, as you know, you have the fire and trash. Yes, and then you have the water sewer. And the fire is funded by property taxes, and the sewer's funded by, water's funded by charges. And on your financials, because us accountants like to make things difficult, the, there's something called GAZB 34, and so the, the fire is on fund financials. That's how you budget every year. And then the sewer is on charges for certain, or basically a cruel basis, more like a business-type activity. So, so I have it broken down. This first page is basically the fire, and that's the property tax collection. And you'll see the, almost all your revenues that come in for the fire department are property taxes. And you had a big jump in, in '23. You can kind of see where the property taxes have been, '20, '21, '22, '23, and then a, a big jump in '24. And that completely changed your operating income. So you'll see you're at 13.3 million in tax revenue, and then your expenses were 8.3 million. So I, I've had this broken down for you. So right here in the middle, it's a really important line, it's called operating income. So after you pay the bills for operations, that's before you pay any debt, before you buy anything new, this is, are you cash flowing just from operations? And you can see where you were in '20 at about 1.6 million, and where you were in '24 at about $5 million. So it really increased, but you need that increase because you have been investing in new fire departments and equipment. You're investing, and, and you have to pay down debt service. So that $5 million, what that does is that allows you to buy new fires, trucks, buy equipment, invest in the buildings, pay down debt service. It allows you to put some into reserves for the future. So that was a really, that was a really nice surprise to see that big jump. But then, as you can see, the next section there, capital outlay, you spent 3.6 million in capital outlay last year. The majority of that, if you remember, is that ladder truck. That was over $2 million for that, for that ladder truck. And then there was some other equipment, some, some, another truck, and then some CIP to get started on Fire Station Number Two. So you end up spending 3.7 million net debt service and debt proceeds. So that's new debt that came in plus debt you paid. The net of those two numbers is about 2.4 million. So that's another 2.4 million that went out. So 3.6 million went out for capital outlay, 2.45 million went out for, for debt service. So you ended up with a positive change. And, and you can see the interest income with, with where the interest rates have been the last two years. You can see in '22, you had $4,700 of interest income, and then here in '24, you have a quarter million dollars. So that was nice. So you ended up with a positive change in net position of 247,000. I think that's fantastic considering the amount of capital outlay you spent to, to still be in a positive change in net position.
What, how many, what gave us that? What were some of the?
The revenues.
Revenues.
Property tax increase. Because if you look at your expenses, they, they went up slightly from just under 8 million to 8.3 million. But the biggest increase there was your, was your property taxes. And that section below here, the expense breakdown, that kind of shows you where you're spending, your operating expenditures. And you can see 80 cents on the dollar goes to salaries and benefits.
And benefit.
Yeah, and all of the fire departments we audit, that's, that is a normal 80%. We see that, we see that salary benefits is by far your largest expenditure. Maintenance is usually the second, because you have so much equipment that has to be maintained. So you can see, that's been fairly consistent over the five years, around 92% this year. Those five categories, salaries and benefits, maintenance, fuel, insurance, utilities. That's, that's about 92 cents of every dollar on the fire department side. And then that COH at the bottom, that's cash on hand. So if you took your 24 expenditures, plus the debt service requirement, you had, you had a little under 14 months of cash on hand, which is, which is a nice increase from under six months back in '20. And I'll, and I'll point out, as you know, one fire truck can take $2 million. And so you can use it up pretty fast. So it's nice to see your cash improve. And I'll, I'll, I'll show you your cash balances here in a second, but it's nice to see your cash on hand improve the way it has. It just gives you better financial liquidity for future, future decisions. Now, the second page is switching over to the sewer, water sewer. And that is going to be your, yeah, all that revenue is based on charges. And we started working with you a few years ago as you were implementing some of your increases in the, in the service cost. And you can see how that affected you. You were 8.2 million in '20. And you can see between '21 and '22, revenue went up about a million. And then '22 to '23 went up about another million. So those are 900,000. So those is where you, that's where you had those increases. I think you had three increases every, an increase every six months for three, for 18 months, I believe it was. And then it's leveled out in '24. So you can see revenue was up about 150,000 in, in '24. So what is done is it stabilized your operating income. Look at '20, your operating income was only 700,000. It was dangerously low. That's not enough at that time to handle. You, you weren't able to spend much on the capital outlay because there just not a lot of operating income there, 720,000. And that's bumped up. You saw '23 got it to 2.3, and it's about that same number in '24. So a much better financial position in, by '24 than you were in, in 2020. And similarly, you use that, that money is going to be used to pay down debt service. It's going to be used to pay for capital outlay. And of course, you had a big jump there. You'll see that gain on sale of assets there at the, the bottom of the '20, '24 column of 1.78 million. That's that land sale. So that really helped your cash flow at the, at the end of the year. So you had, and here you had a positive change in net position of 4.4 million. About half of that was from operations, and about half of that was from, from the sale of the land. So that really helped. And then the same expense broke, breakdown right here at the bottom. You can see, and this is very consistent with other water sewer type entities we audit, where the biggest expense is typically your sewer treatment cost, if you're outsourcing that. And then the next is, is labor, salary and benefits, and then depreciation. So same thing, you got those few categories right there, that's consuming about 92 cents on the dollar of all of your expenditures. And that's been fairly consistent over the years. And, and another good thing, cash on hand for the business side for the sewer and water has also increased from five months to 17 months. So that's really, again, increased your liquidity and putting you in a better financial position. So a couple more pages flip over.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
What was the, the contributing factor for the major decrease in '21 from '20? '20 to '21 in operating budget?
Oh, so what's the major, let's see. The increase, you mean the increase, Alfred? It was, it was the increase in fees. Because if you look, you were, you went up about 1.1 million. And if you go to the very top line, charges for service, you were up about a million dollars in revenue.
I know, from what I'm seeing, we went down from 720 to 465. Six. Operating income.
Oh, '20 to, to '20 to '21, just an increase. You can see you weren't, the, the, the big increase there was just overall cost. So your labor, so when you look at '20 and '21, if you look at under expenses, your revenue was fairly close, but your expenses went up from 7.4 million to 7.8 million. So that 400,000 dropped to operating. And if you look down, you'll see most of that increase in salaries and benefits, because they went from 1.78 to almost 2.05. So that was a big cost. And then the other, you also had a little bit of an increase in your sewer treatment cost that was about 90,000. Your maintenance went up about 60,000. So when, when you're looking at '20 to '21 and you saw that drop, it was really because the revenue didn't increase significantly, but your, your expenses did increase. And so that next year, from '21 to '22 is when you started implementing the, the, because under a half a million dollars, that's, that's getting dangerously low. That really hurts your, your cash flow and your financial stability. And so that's really improved a lot from '21 to, to '23.
Could you, could you, but, um, sorry, may I impose upon you? Could you explain how all debt is not bad in the financial world of accounting principles?
Yes, and I will show you that. If you want to flip the next page, because that's, that opened up another business and that's going to generate revenue or it's going to, that's, I would say that's good debt. And same with, with here, if you were borrowing because you're not cash flowing operations, that's bad debt. I mean, that's, that means you, that's just bad debt because you're not building anything, you're not adding asset, you're just, you're spending too much money and you're not bringing enough in. So you're having to borrow to fill that gap. That's bad debt. Good debt is when you need a new fire station, but you have the resources, regional side to be able to pay for it and help the finances. But you'll see, like, this is the fire department balance sheet. And you'll see your, your unrestricted cash went from just under four million.